Vice Speaker Cruz. Was there an amendment on the floor? Senator Yamashita, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on Bill number 190-32. I stand in full support of this measure, Madam Speaker. And this morning, when the Vice Speaker forwarded us the clip or the videotaping of what the Chancellor of U.S. San Diego, Pudip Kosta, had to say, it was a real nice break for me after all the morning activity, just to sit down and enjoy the coffee and listen. And it really helped me remember why this is a very important initiative, why this is an initiative that can be very helpful, and why it's very smart and strategic to support the University of Guam in establishing a research corporation. You know, most certainly, as I listened to this Chancellor talk about biotechnology and how it's rank-to-life technology and economic development and businesses and all the monies that it made, talked about the hotbed of all this innovation, there are a couple of things that crossed my mind this morning. And one was, as the Chancellor talked about global implications that come from research corporations, I thought that one of the global implications that really can come from the University of Guam, Guam Community College, our part of the world, Guam and the Marianas, really is a lot of research that's really needed right now in diversity. Our world is getting smaller and smaller, and I think that on Guam, because of our diversity, we are more aware of and we are more comfortable in dealing with differences. But I do know that across the world, that is not so. And I think that across the world, people who are opening up new businesses, visiting new communities, would be really interested in reading what diversity really is. And so I think that we are in a very good place to really research what diversity is, how it is defined, whether it's cultural, language, skills, and how do you work with it? And you know, Madam Speaker, oftentimes, people will say that America is a great melting pot. But many of us who have studied human growth and development and community development, often, many of us would say, we're really not a melting pot at all. We have not melted into oneness. And I think yesterday's public hearing on the addition of some committee members to the committee that's going to be preparing our island for the FestPAC, I think the resulting bill, and what is now in the third reading file, for me, really exemplified how we are not a melting pot, how every single aspect of what a community brings is real critical to how we move forward. But yet, communities do not have a handle on how to do that. And I think that the research corporation out here would really help understand what those components are, what those processes are, and what intended outcomes can be realized, and how to really detract from unintended consequences. So the diversity issue, I also think that this research corporation can really help the whole world understand the ever-changing family structure. There was a time when just about every family had a mom and a dad. And today, 50 percent of our families end up in divorce. And today, there may be two parents in a family, but they might be two moms, or they might be two dads. And there's a lot of implications for how do you deal with a changing family structure? What does that look like? How do we deal with parents who live a lot longer? How do we best support them policy-wise? Next week, I'm having a community meeting on extended daycare for our seniors. There's more people coming up to me and saying, "We love them, but we each hold two jobs, and we're not sure how to do this." And so, family situations, and how it grows, how it changes, and how to best meet the needs of our families as they grow, as they change, as they evolve, the evolving norms, that's a real research question. The global partnerships. Most certainly, again, this morning, we talked at length about, when we were talking about medicinal marijuana, and we talked about pharmacies, and we talked about banking. There was lots of dialogue on the floor about how do you balance what the federal government is saying to what the state governor wants to say, to what the local government is saying. And I think, as the world gets smaller and smaller again, Guam would be in a situation in a really good place to research and to offer white papers to say, "This is how it can work across the oceans, across the congresses, across the courtyards." And so, the reason why I say that all of these particular issues that I'm raising are really important, because as the Chancellor says, it is about global implications, and it is about helping economies grow, I would suggest that this is a real opportunity to help the whole world understand how to best harness human capital. Because whether it is about computers, or whether it's about innovations or businesses, as it is about teaching, and it is about health, the growth of our world powers, the health of our global situation is always going to be about people, always going to be about people. It's always going to be, how do we best support, grow, motivate people, all people? No longer are they the people that fit in the cookie mold, but they're all people. Those of us with autism, and those of us with no autism. Those of us who have two limbs amputated, and those of us who don't. Those of us who've been deployed two times, or somehow got deployed five times. How do we make all of this work? And how do we say, "This is an opportunity to research, to become innovative, and just a way to grow prosperity and peace across the world"? So, yes, biotechnology, yes, businesses, yes, it's a way to allow the University of Guam to grow its resources, for sure. Me, it's a real opportunity to research human infrastructure, and how to best grow supports and systems for human beings. So I stand in full support of Bill number 190. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Yamashita. On the main motion, I'll give it to Senator Chris Duñez and Senator Mike Siniklas.
Buenas tardes, sensores, madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 190. You know, it's always a treat to go to the University of Guam, especially because most of our high schools, I think with the exception of JFK, have their graduations up there simply, I believe, because of capacity, with all the proud parents, relatives, public officials, and the like, who come out to congratulate our young people for their success of having completed their education. I always enjoy President Underwood making presentations before each and every one of those graduating classes. And I, you know, I share, I think, sometimes with yourself and other of us in public service charged with the responsibility of providing opportunity to our people, particularly our young people, in terms of jobs and the like. And I wonder sometimes, I know a lot of us look around, and it's a daunting task, watching all of those young people and trying to prepare for their future and provide an opportunity for their future. But I always hearken back to the good words of the good President Underwood, saying, and always saying, and I think it's his companion organization as well as GCC, that UOG is the best investment that we can make in terms of the opportunity for our island, preparing our young people, and preparing our economy in order to be successful. And we've said that over the years, but I don't know that we've done it completely. And I think back to a lot of other experiences that I've had in the private sector. Good ideas are good ideas, but without the tools, without the legislation, without the laws that provide for this opportunity and this growth, then it's not complete in terms of what the efforts are. So I congratulate, as I read this morning, the Vice Speaker's email, you know, the culmination of how this bill came about, and the efforts that came together with himself, the Vice Speaker, our Speaker Judy Wampad, and of course, our good Senator Ali Yamashita. It was kind of interesting, when I was reading the Vice Speaker's email, because he alluded to the fact that he may not have the business acumen to have been presenting this because of his extensive education and government work as a Chief Justice, as a lawyer, as a lawmaker, and all the things that he's done in terms of his government experience. But I charge, Madam Speaker, that that's actually his strength. And the reason why bringing forward this bill is so appropriate, simply because he's always had a responsibility, whether a judge, a senator, or in every other government capacity that he's had, he's been charged, like many of us, with the challenges of providing for opportunities. So I think, actually, it's not a weakness, it's a strength, to have that vantage point, to have to bring forward a piece of legislation such as this, that provides a lot of hope and a lot of promise for tomorrow in terms of developing, and as he stated so eloquently in his email soliciting support, for diversification of our economy. We all know, Madam Speaker, that it is no secret, with our island paradise, of course, tourism has and will always be, I believe, either number one or number two for many decades to come, just simply because of our location in the world, and just people's natural migration to beautiful places such as Guam. We also know that, because of our strategic location in our deep-water port, that we're always going to be a place that is looked upon as providing security for democracy within this region of Asia. But it's not good enough, Madam Speaker, as we know and we see the challenges now, to just simply rely on those economies to provide for our people. I'll close, Madam Speaker, with one of the, as the Vice Speaker said when he goes to the University of Guam, and other places, when we're invited as candidates to speak to young people in other forums, what are our ideas in terms of providing for a great economic future, or a good economic future? I always liken us within this region in Asia unto Singapore, simply because we're actually not that different in terms of landmass. And of course, regionally, we're within the same similar area. Now, of course, I don't know, although it's a beautiful place and a wonder of the world, I think we enjoy our relative serene life here with our 170, 180,000 residents and growing. I don't know that we'd ever really want to be like Singapore and the millions of people, but somewhere in between, that wonder of the world and our efforts to move forward is going to be, and is going to have to require, more innovation, more technology, and more diversification of our economy. And this, Madam Speaker, is one tool that will help us get there. And I want to say I rise with pride in all of the authors for putting this together, and the vision of our good President of the University of Guam, to truly see the culmination of his constant efforts, saying over and over again, "Come to the University of Guam for the answers and the opportunities to build our economy, and to build a wonderful and prosperous Guam." So with that, Madam Speaker, I would like to finish by saying once again, I hope the rest of our colleagues can join the effort here in supporting Bill 190-32, and I certainly will be voting in affirmative for it. Sensores, madam Speaker.
Hagummas, Benpovetz, and Senator Duñez. Also on the main motion, I'd like to address Senator Mike Siniklas, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full and absolute support of this piece of legislation, and, you know, I just want to talk about just how profoundly significant this bill may be for our island. The author of the legislation went through some information that was very good, giving an idea of where this can go. What we're basically creating, Madam Speaker, is an incubator of research and ideas. It's going to be empowering our university and giving them a very clear direction and mandate that everything that's going to be done within this particular entity that we're creating is going to be for the purposes of conducting research, and for looking for opportunities that are going to benefit our people, either through informative research that's going to give us more data and allow us to be able to make informed decisions, or through research that's going to create new opportunities, open new doors, give us new ideas, that things that we probably haven't even thought about already. And so, I think this is one of those bills that, if enacted into law, are going to create a tremendous amount of opportunities for our people. And it's very, very difficult for us to be able to quantify and foresee exactly what the impact is going to be. But it's one of those things that's going to open up opportunities and pretty much make the sky the limit. So I absolutely rise in full support of this bill. I do have an amendment that I would like to proffer, and it's on page nine, lines four to six. I do believe a copy has been circulated to all of my colleagues. And this amendment is to make sure that the annual report that's produced by this new entity includes a synopsis of all ongoing research projects, and a summary of funding for each such project by the source of such funding, whether local government, federal government, or other sources. And the reason why I think it's important for us to be able to have this information included in the annual report is so that whenever we receive this report, we can look at it and say, "Wow, these are the things they're working on." And then we can think about what opportunities can be created based on that research, and maybe even come to the conclusion that that kind of research deserves even more funding, and even more support to expand and improve upon what it's trying to achieve. I think that by adding this section in here, we'll be able to get a firm handle on what exactly is going on on an annual basis, as far as the actual research is concerned. And from there, we can make the decisions as to whether or not we want to offer more support, or whether or not we should be having roundtables and bringing more agencies to the table, so that they can get more support from other agencies within the government, or even having roundtables and bringing the private sector in to figure out whether or not the research can be targeted in a certain way the private sector can jump on and benefit from. So I would like at this time to proffer this amendment for my colleagues to consider as an addition to Bill 190-32.
On the amendment, anybody wishing to speak? Are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries. Mr. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just to close in my support for this bill, you know, I mentioned earlier, and we discussed earlier, a measure that's looking to plant a seed to create revenue for our school bus maintenance. And, you know, we've planted so many seeds, we've attempted to at the very least, this is one of them. This is the kind of seed that will sprout new ideas and new opportunities for our people. And ideas are what's going to really stimulate our ability to take greater control over the direction that we want to set Guam into, and what we want to achieve for our people. And, you know, the other seeds that we've tried to plant, I tried to plant one not too long ago, unfortunately got vetoed, to try and create an interstate exchange, so that we can get our people to start having a venue to invest in local businesses. And I'll be coming back to my colleagues in the future to try and get their support to override that veto. But I believe that the more we can plant these kinds of seeds, the kinds that will sprout into new opportunities and really flourish and grow, these are the kind of things that make the crafting of legislation so profound. You know, it's not just about making laws, it's not just about creating regulations, limitations, it's about creating opportunities. And this bill is going to create so many in the area of ideas, new thoughts, new information, stuff that we can actually take and use and grow our island, and grow the opportunities for our people. So I'm very, very grateful for the hard work of the author in putting this together, and I'm very grateful for the university's contributions in the process, and their willingness to enter this new era of research and idea development that's going to be a great thing for our people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Siniklas. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Frank Goveney, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Buenas tardes, sensores, senadores, madam. You know, Madam Speaker, as I was sitting here and just looking at the legislation and trying to understand the implications that this proposal would have, because I was in attendance at the public hearing for this proposal, and there are a few words that immediately came to mind. One is, "Think outside the box." And another is, and I know this phrase has been coined by one of our wonderful educational institutions on island, but the Harvard of the Western Pacific. That's in terms of, at the university level. Another term that came to mind was relevance. As we look at the ever-changing world in education, especially higher education in this case, obviously, the University of Guam has to continually stay at the forefront of providing that relevance, or being relevant and providing that critical education to our community. Another phrase that also came to mind was, "Waters do not divide, but unite our peoples." And that applies to Guam, CNMI, the Micronesia region, and could conceivably extend to the Asian region. These are all thoughts that certainly came across my mind a few minutes ago, in terms of looking at this legislation, because it would allow for an entity to be established, and allow for the University of Guam to utilize the existing resources on island, to expand itself to resources that could be made available and accessed elsewhere, whether it be in the mainland or other parts of the world, and to continue to provide that education at the forefront. And that's what this legislation would do. I understand that the good sponsor had mentioned a little earlier that there's a little bit of reservation, or some concerns, that may be expressed by a few of our colleagues, and rightfully so. Because I circled a provision here that would give this entity carte blanche authority in buying, selling, leasing, and renting assets that are within the jurisdiction of the University of Guam. And then I stepped back and I asked myself the question, looking at the composition of the membership for this particular organization, under the guise of the University of Guam, looking at the assets, the real estate, and the resources available at the university, that first phrase that I shared a little earlier, "Think outside the box," immediately came to mind. Because as we look at organizations like this, especially at our higher education institution, we need to provide the system and the mechanism so that they can realize the goals that are set out in the construction and the setting up of this particular research corporation. And I look at it from that perspective, and I say, yes, maybe it does provide some expanded capabilities, or expanded authority, but maybe that's what it needs, so that eventually it can attain that reference that I also mentioned a little earlier, the Harvard of the Western Pacific. You know, I stand here, Madam Speaker, not only endorsing this legislation, but mostly especially recalling the words of the sponsor a few minutes ago, and it's the phrase that has been coined at the University of Guam, of going from good to great. If this is what is going to make the university, or contribute to the University of Guam, of going from good to great, then certainly that's the direction that I'd like to take and endorse this proposal. But I also stand here, particularly with some personal interest, because my oldest son and my daughter-in-law, his wife, just graduated in December. They are proud alumnis of the university. I also have two of my other children who are attending the University of Guam. And I'd like to eventually see them not only graduate from the university, but walk away from that university as proud alumnis, so that perhaps, when the corporation reaches out to them, whether it be the Alumni Endowment Foundation, or this corporation reaches out to them someday and asks them for resources, that they would make that direct contribution, because that would have been the foundation of their education from the higher education capacity. So I stand here, not only proud of what the university has produced thus far, but really what the university will continue to produce on an annual basis, their graduates, and most importantly, I look forward to the eventual establishment of this research corporation, and I also look forward to their product, or the results of this organization moving forward, with all of the authority provided in this legislation, and hopefully ultimately continue to benefit not only Guam, not only our region, but perhaps the entire Pacific region and the Asian region. So I stand in full endorsement of this legislation, and I commend the sponsor, because he said that he may not have any business acumen, Madam Speaker, from everything that I have been involved in, in terms of listening very intently to his comments with regards to certain issues, whether it deals with finances, whether it deals with the health of our people, certainly that passion just has shined right through. And this is another leading example of his passion shining through and believing in something that the university can become, in terms of eventually enacting this legislation and providing additional higher education and research to our island community and to the Asian region. So I stand and supported this measure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Goveney. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? If not, Vice Speaker Cruz, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues. Oh, wait, I think you wanted to speak.
Yes, I understand. Senator Mike Limtjako, I'll give you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the legislation. You know, I had the honor of spending a couple of hours with President and Dr. Underwood up at the University of Guam, and we just sat and chatted for that entire time, as well as took a tour of not only the proposed plans for the future of UOG, and the use of their endowment funds, and how they're going to grow UOG, but we talked specifically about their intention to establish this research corporation, and the good that can come of it, becoming an incubator of economic development. And in that tour, we went through the different sites, he showed me specific areas of the campus where he feels that are ripe for development, as well as for, you know, promoting the research corporation. And in reading the legislation, you know, it definitely gives them the power to do that. And, you know, when you think about sort of the local effect, you know, on our economic development, it's such a grand scheme, kind of like overarching vision of what it truly can become. And, you know, just imagine the areas it can take us in innovation, and I hate to use this as such an elementary description, but, you know, when you go to Fiesta, you know, and you always see our people fanning the flies away from the food, you know, it'd be a great innovation if we can figure out how to not have people do that, you know, that could see that coming from something like this. And I make that description because it kind of localizes the innovation that can come from the research corporation, as opposed to, you know, these larger feder- state-funded UC universities, University of California universities, that have access to so much money, as well as large corporations within those communities to really drive innovation. You know, I'm thinking, you know, and of course, that can still happen with this, you know, game-changing innovation that could take us beyond the realms of Guam and into, you know, world innovation. But just from the localized innovation alone, it's extremely exciting. So I definitely rise in full support of it. I wish it the best of success, and I think with the leaders at the University of Guam, it can be a great success. I had the opportunity to discuss briefly with the author of the bill, whether or not Section 2801 on page three, which is the establishment of the research corporation, whether or not the language that exists in just that one section, whether or not it's, one, whether or not this body is even authorized to the way it's written, and I know that he is prepared to proffer an amendment to do that. But whether or not even requiring that the corporation shall be a 501(c)(3) is even warranted in the sense that, you know, given the government entity, it may already have the benefits... already have the benefits of accomplishing what I believe the 401(c)(3) intends to accomplish. So, you know, for example, the 50, excuse me, the 501(c)(3). So it's intended for private nonprofits who want to receive deductible donations, you know, so, you know, in effect, right, University of Guam or government corporations don't need to qualify for 501(c)(3) status. So, you know, if I can just request a small, short recess, Madam Speaker, so we can just kind of figure out that language to make sure that we don't derail anything that the bill attempts to accomplish, we just ensure that we're, we have the right language in there.
I'll go ahead and give you a legislative minute. We're in recess. Back from recess. Senator Limchak, do you have an amendment, or have you talked to?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I discussed with the author, as well as legal counsel, and I have a amendment to proffer. So on Page 3, Line 10, the following language would be striked out. There is will be striked out, and the following language will be inserted. The University of Guam is authorized to establish, and then the word "as" on Line 11 will be striked out, and then the continuing language will continue. So it will read, "The University of Guam is authorized to establish a body corporate, the Research Corporation of the University of Guam," et cetera. And then on Line 12, the words, starting at "the corporation," shall be a, and striking out of 501(c)(3), and then continuing on to Public Corporation Incorporated on Guam, and that same language will continue all the way to the period ending in UOG in parenthesis. I'm sorry, the removal of the period after UOG, and then the following language added, "and may apply for a 501(c)(3) designation."
Okay. Do you have that in writing, Senator Limchak? You want to put it down?
Yeah.
So if I read this correctly, the University of Guam is authorized to establish a body corporate of the Research Corporation of the University of Guam, and then on Line 12, we will strike out the, after a, 501(c)(3), and then after, on Line 14, after the closed parentheses, we're going to take the period away from them and insert, and may apply for a 501(c) designation.
Yes, the 501(c)(3).
Three, 501(c)(3) designation.
Yes.
Okay. On the amendment? Are there any objections? One wishing to speak? No objections? Motion carries. Senator Limchak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And once again, I stand in full support of the legislation. I commend the author for the vision as to what it, what will it, it will mean for economic development on Guam, as well as the benefits that will be afforded to the University of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Anyone else on the motion? Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on Bill 190-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 190, and the Speaker, Vice Speaker is right when we had this conversation with Senator Eliana Maschien, Speaker Pangolinan, to discuss the possibility of drafting this legislation. I support this wholeheartedly, and I know the legislature has been very supportive of it. And I say this primarily because in all the years that I've been here, the different terms that I've been here, is that the legislature has always looked to the university in terms of doing some research. We've actually mandated, or even through resolutions, have requested the universities to partake in certain studies that we want in the government. I know that former Senator Julie Guthers, at one time with her bill, in terms of just bringing up the question about our political self-determination, she wanted the university to participate in that. At the time when we were going through the environmental impact study, we were at the university speaking to Mark, asking if Mark, too, should take the lead in doing a lot of these research. We've also heard many times that when we were out there during the scoping meetings, and they were relating to us the different studies that were done, done outside of Guam. And it, and some of it, of course, just didn't make any sense. It just doesn't even match, and surely does not meet our needs here. So when you look at some of the reasons for this, some of the things that the research corporation will do is that, and on Page 3, is encouraging, initiating, aiding, developing, conducting, you know, training, research, and study in the physical, biological, and social sciences, and humanities, and all other related areas. And when you stop and look at Guam, and not just Guam, of course, look at the blue continent, which includes all of Micronesia, and many of our Micronesian brothers and sisters, their governments have been asking and looking to the university as well, to assist or, you know, provide some research in the areas of marine life. Climate change is one of the biggest, and we know that our low-lying atolls in Micronesia are greatly impacted. They've gone always elsewhere, looking at everybody else's study, but what we need to do is actually possibly create those studies here. The environmental concerns as well, oh my gosh, do we have a lot of environmental concerns that we can definitely, and I'm sure different groups, governments, agencies would like to have this research done here, and preferably through the university. I know that in the organizations that I belong to, with PRAO, the Pacific Resource Education and Learning Organization, the Association of Pacific Islands Legislatures, even PUE, who is out here, have provided assistance and funding, looking for research just in Micronesia. And then take PIHWA, which is the Pacific Islands Health Officers Association. I've been just using only the public health organizations, but then again, there could be the university who could be conducting this type of research and study to assist us here in the Blue Pacific. So by doing this, it's important that we not only then give the university the tools to be able to do this, because then what's going to happen as a result of it, it would help actually remove some of the impediments holding our university back, and that's not what we would want. We want our university to truly be that pearl of the Pacific. We want our university, we want other universities throughout Micronesia to look at the University of Guam, to be able to do this research for them, instead of having now to go to the University of Hawaii. And I'm not saying, you know, not go there. I mean, good grief, my son is currently taking his masters from there, so I'm not putting, you know, them down at all. But I think it's because we've not given the tools to the University of Guam to be able then to do this. So with this bill, it would surely then now put the University of Guam as the university throughout Micronesia, throughout the blue continent, where groups and organizations and governments can come to the university then to conduct that research that will be representative and more importantly, relevant to the area. So I wholeheartedly support this. I thank the Speaker, the Vice Speaker, for, you know, asking for us to participate in that meeting with the university president. So I, at least from what I'm hearing, I think that everyone here supports Bill 190, and if not, I'm urging those who are currently wavering to reconsider, help our university to not only help themselves, but more importantly, to help the region. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Speaker Wampat. Anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 190? If not, Vice Speaker Cruz, I will recognize you on the closing.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their very kind comments. It was very humbling. I almost thought maybe it was my eulogy or something. But I really am humbled by some of the comments that were made. But the importance of research corporations is very timely, Madam Speaker. Just within the last couple of hours, the President of the United States delivered his State of the Union address, and in it, I'd like to just read a couple of lines. "We also have a chance right now to beat other countries in the race for the next wave of high-tech manufacturing jobs. My administration has launched two hubs for high-tech manufacturing in Raleigh and Youngstown, where we've connected businesses to research universities that can help America lead the world in advanced technologies. Tonight, I'm announcing we'll launch six more this year." He also goes on. "We know that the nation that goes all in on innovation today will own global economy tomorrow. This is an edge America cannot surrender. Federally funded research helped lead the ideas and inventions behind Google and smartphones. That is why Congress should undo the damage done by last year's cuts to basic research, so we can unleash the next great American discovery, whether it's vaccines that stay ahead in drug-resistant bacteria, or paper-thin material that's stronger than steel. And let's pass patent reform bills that allow our businesses to stay focused on innovation, not costly, needed legislation." And Madam Speaker, I know that earlier you mentioned in discussion of Bill 215, Laguna. And I know one of the good senators here picked lots of leaves for me to make Laguna tea. I mean, hopefully, that's one area that can be done. And I know that many of you are involved in the movement on island, and there's many things that can be. Maybe, as the President says, we'll find that next vaccine for whatever it is that ails us, whether it's a cancer that's killing our people, or any other kind of vaccine that is necessary with all the suruhanas on island and the knowledge that they have. And Madam Speaker, one of the retiring speakers talked about thinking outside the box and spotlighting Guam. I think a lot of us forgot that our nine minutes, or the 15 minutes in the spotlight, was a couple of years ago, when James Cameron was here. When, in his little submarine, next to Scripps Institute, was the big G of the University of Guam. And many of us forgot, or didn't mention, that a lot of the professors that were up at the university were assisting in the research that was being done, in the things that were coming up from the ocean, and they were utilizing some of the equipment that was up at the university. We've already been doing this. And all this bill is trying to do is to take us that one step further, to make sure that if James Cameron or somebody else comes back out to go back down into the depths of the Marianas Trench, or if, as I watched on PBS a few weeks ago, the story about why everybody keeps fighting over these islands. over these islands that seem, you know, uninhabited. Why are they fighting over it? Is there something in the bottom of the ocean floor that we need to try to find, or some organism that we need to try to tap? And we already, I mean, if you watch that video this morning, and that the UC San Diego Chancellor spoke about Scripps Institute, we have students from Scripps Institute in San Diego that actually come to do a semester or a year on Guam to, at the University of Guam. We have kids from all over the world that are coming to study here. And so the university has that opportunity. And I think all I'm trying to do with this bill, and I hope that all of you will join me in it, is to break some of the shackles that's holding them down and allow them to run free to do what they need to do to become a great university and to spur this economy on. So again, I thank all of my colleagues for their very kind comments and for their support. And let's hope that together we can make the University of Guam go from good to great, and our economy go from good to great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Vice Speaker.
The bill down to third reading.
And for the record, my support also, to move it down to third reading voting pile without objection. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, Vice Speaker Cruz on Bill 180 or 192? You want to set that aside? I'll go ahead and entertain Senator Mike Siniklas on Bill 214, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 214 is an act to allow employees of government of Guam agencies and instrumentalities to apply payroll deductions to registered nonprofit organizations on our island. In a nutshell, what the bill is intending--
Do you want to go ahead and move it--
I'm sorry. Yes, Madam Speaker.
To the third reading, and then I'll go ahead and let you speak on it.
I'd like to make a motion to place this on the third reading pile and an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I apologize for that.
No worries.
So the, in a nutshell, what the bill is trying to do is allow for all of our government of Guam employees throughout the government to be able to elect, to have a portion of their pay, payroll deducted to the nonprofit organizations on our island. And, you know, just at 2:30 this afternoon, I received an email from Sanctuary. Sanctuary is one of our nonprofit organizations here in Guam, and they work a lot with our young people. They do so many different things for our young people, and they're really hurting for money. And a lot, a lot of the same is going on throughout our nonprofit organizations all over the island. From the effects of federal sequestration that's denying them federal funds, to a more challenging fundraising environment, to even greater needs out there in the community that they want to address, they just don't have the resources to. Our nonprofit organizations do an enormous amount of work for our community, something that our government, they fill the gaps that our government isn't filling. And they go out there and they raise money on their own to be able to meet the goals and objectives that they have. And what I would like for us to do with this bill is to give them the opportunity to be able to tap into the payroll deduction opportunities in our government so that our employees, who are very giving, all of our people on Guam are very giving, I want to allow our employees and the government in particular to be able to payroll deduct to the nonprofit organizations of their choice. That way, you know, I might not be able to write a $100 check, but I can definitely do a $5 every two-week payroll deduction to a certain nonprofit. And when you add up those kind of donations across the board, we're talking about a lot of money that can start coming into our nonprofits on a regular basis. You know, $5 every two weeks times 1,000 employees is $5,000 every two weeks, you know? And so that's, that's what I want to try and accomplish with this bill. I want to give our people a more streamlined venue to be able to support our nonprofits, even in the smallest of ways. And I want our nonprofits to be able to go out there and get that kind of support in a way that's beyond the traditional fundraising mechanisms. I mean, they work so hard, they do car washes, you know, they go out and they ring bells, you know, they go door-to-door, they do bake sales. Something as simple as a payroll deduction authorization, two nonprofits can go a very long way in providing them with a revenue stream that will help them to achieve their missions and even grow and expand their services to our community. So I humbly ask my colleagues to please consider Bill 214. It will go a long way towards helping our community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Siniklas. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. I'm embarrassed with the number of years that I've actually been in this legislature that I've not thought about this. And I'm embarrassed because I have been chairman of just about every nonprofit on this island. And I know that we've tried to do the federal giving. We've all applied to get federal designations so we can get into the federal government to get their payroll deduction, but we've not done it locally. And so I think this is an excellent idea to allow every government of Guam employee to, as the good sponsor put it, maybe being asked to write a $100 check today might be a little rough, but $5 a pay period, or the 26 pay periods, will get more than the $100 would today, that would be very difficult. And so if everybody just pitches in, we'll be able to assist whichever, whichever organization we want to, or several, actually, if that's our desire. But it is difficult sometimes, and I know you get the checks, and it's $100 to Make-A-Wish, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters--
That's right, Corral.
And it just, I saw, and so this, the little drops of blood are easy, it's the big cut that hurts. And so I fully support this piece of legislation and commend the author for the vision of coming up with this. Thank you.
You're welcome, Vice Speaker Cruz. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Siniklas, would you like to, oh, Senator Frank Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, too, would like to stand in support of this legislation. And, you know, what's very interesting is that every, in a nonprofit organization, every single penny counts. And just looking at some numbers, if everyone, let's say, for example, 300 individuals were to contribute a dollar a pay period, that would add up to $7,800 just for the entire year for that nonprofit organization. And I bring that up because $7,800 for a nonprofit organization, coming from a separate entity or organization or individuals, really can go a long way. Because these individuals will serve on the boards, and in most cases, most of these nonprofit organizations work for free. They are outright volunteers because they believe in the cause and they want to contribute back to the community. So I certainly stand in full support of this legislation, Madam Speaker. And just looking at some of the numbers that can conceivably be extended out to the nonprofit organizations, I mean, the number of $5 per period was added. If 300 individuals, and obviously, we have 11,500 public employees, but if 300 individuals within the government of Guam family decide to contribute $5 a pay period, that would add up to $19,000 a year, or $19,000 every two weeks, and obviously, ultimately, $130,000 a year. That could go directly to these nonprofit organizations that either support the poor and also assist in the construction of homes, such as Habitat for Humanities, also reaches out to provide some additional resources to the homeless. And in many cases, a lot of these nonprofit organizations also support many of our island veterans. So I stand in full support of this, and I certainly commend the good sponsor for this particular initiative. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Uggan. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? If not, Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to make an amendment to add cosponsors to the bill. I'd like to add Vice Speaker Cruz as a cosponsor, Senator Frank Uggan as a cosponsor, and if there are any other senators as well who'd like to be Senator, Madam Speaker, as a cosponsor, Tina Barnes, and any other senators as well.
On that motion, without any objection. Motion carries. Also, the motion to put it on the third reading voting pile without objections, motion carries. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, if we don't entertain Bill 192, we'll go ahead and, you want to entertain 192 now? The electronic. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized on Bill 192-32COR.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for recognizing me to make this motion, place Bill 192-32 on the third reading and ask for an opportunity to speak on it.
Please do, Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, about three years ago, I was reading the tourism news that you and I get all the time. We get like several every single day. And I saw a very interesting reference to a Manila Times article that I thought I should probably read, and I pulled it up. And it was a Manila Times article dated May the 7th, I mean, January the 7th, 2011. And in the article, it described the fact that this corporation in the Philippines, known as Phil Webb, and if you go to their site, they advertise themselves as the largest online gambling concern in the Philippines. And I read on further in the article, and the article said that this Phil Webb organization had established some relationship with the family on Guam, and that they were going to be opening their first internet cyber cafe on Guam. I thought that was interesting. So I immediately contacted Revenue, New and Taxation, and asked them to please do some research for me to see whether or not anybody had filed for an application for an internet cafe, cyber sweepstakes. Sure enough, a couple of weeks later, I was notified that there was, and that there was this company that was opening up in the Compadre's Mall. I alerted both the Attorney General and the Department of Revenue and Taxation about the fact that I saw this article in the paper and that this was a, an online gambling concern. The Department of Revenue and Taxation sent out a couple of its agents, and one of them decided he was going to get on the, utilize the services of the cafe, and he was rewarded with a monetary payback. The Revenue and Taxation agent then attempted to close down the place. Unfortunately, the law requen, well, not unfortunately, there really should be due process. Well, anyway, the due process was that there had to be an administrative hearing. And the administrative hearing had to be done by the Attorney General's office. And so I alerted the Attorney General's office of the fact that this revenue agent had gone out, had been paid cash for playing on this machine at this concern at Compadre's Mall. I could not get the Attorney General's office to prosecute the case because they insisted that our local statutes had no prohibition against that. And to just bring it down to simple terms, we were dealing with 21st century technology with 20th, if not 19th century laws. And so the current gambling laws on the island made no mention about online gambling, made no mention about interstate gambling online. And the Attorney General's office felt that it did not have the authority to prosecute or to move forward with this administrative hearing. There are other things, I won't bore you with my other discussions with them and my scream-outs with them about the fact that they needed to go out and investigate. Suffice it to say that they, we finally agreed that they did not believe, and I had to accept the fact that they did not have the authority to effectuate a closure of this corporation. Late, no, early last year, Phil Webb published its 2012 annual report. And in its 2012 annual report, it goes on to talk about the fact that this concern at Compadre's Mall was doing such great business that they were going to be opening another site on Guam. And since that publication of the annual report, they have indeed opened another one up at the, up in, up at Tumon. And so we have two gambling concerns. I had my staff go out and do an investigation, since the AG said they couldn't do it because they had no buy money to be able to use money to be able to go on. And so one of my staffers went out and used his own cash out of his pocket to get online. And when he punched into the machine at the cafe, up on the screen came, "Welcome to our casino," after which he was able to access blackjack, Kino, and a couple of other games of gambling games. I then got back on the telephone and, in a way that I sometimes can be known to speak, was very loud with the Attorney General's office about the fact that something needed to be done, that they were actually announcing that they were calling themselves a casino. So the Attorney General and I agreed that what needed to be done was they needed to bring our statutes from the 20th century into the 21st century to meet with this new technology. And so they graciously drafted Bill 192 for me, and I introduced it last September. And I just, again, I'd like to read something from a source that I don't usually go to, but I thought was interesting because of this fighting between them, between themselves. And this is from a publication by the American Gaming Association. Needless to say, I don't subscribe, but it's very easy to get online. And this is how they, they open up the article on internet sweepstakes cafes. "In recent years, thousands of internet sweepstakes cafes," quote-unquote, "have sprung up in storefronts, gas stations, convenience stores, and more than a dozen states. Carefully designed to take advantage of state sweepstakes laws and to avoid state anti-gambling laws and gambling licensing restrictions, internet sweepstakes cafes are estimated to earn more than $10 billion a year with games that closely mimic the experience of traditional slot and video poker machines. The cafes advertise and sell a product, usually internet time or long-distance telephone minutes that the gambler does not actually want. Along with that unwanted product, the customer receives a supposed bonus of entities, entries in the internet sweepstakes. With these entries, the customer can participate in internet-based games at the cafe specialty program, personal computers. Based on a random allocation of winning and losing entries, the customer may or may not win cash prizes-- win cash prizes throughout those games. According to the games that are reaping unregulated profits, this elaborate masquerade is not gambling." According to the cafes that are reaping unregulated profits, "this elaborate masquerade is not gambling, but a sweepstakes. According to every appellate court that has decided a case involving similar cases, this is incontestably gambling." I want to read to you from the committee report on this, on this bill. Oh, hold on. The comment made by the, by the President of Phil Webb in the Philippines. This was his letter. "The Guam Sweepstakes Corporation operates two internet establishments that use simulated sweepstakes games as a promotion tool to sell internet time. Under the caption, 'It is not gambling.' In order for gambling to take place, by definition, the following three elements must be present: consideration, something of value placed as a wager or bet; two, chance, the element of risk; three, award, a prize, usually money or an item of value. Sweepstakes promotions do not require a consideration to play and are not considered to be a game of chance." They claim there's no consideration, and the best part is the no, not a game of chance. This is what he writes. "The sweepstakes promotion is," quote unquote, "fixed," and that's a term that he used, and it's probably the most correct statement that he's made in his, in his letter, "that it is fixed," or quote unquote, "finite," meaning before sweepstakes even starts, there is already 100% certainty that the, what the outcome will be. The following are predetermined: the number of entries and winners there will be, and how much each will win. What is not predetermined or known is the identity of who will win." Well, Madam Speaker, I just came back from a family reunion, and I guess to rub my nose in it, the family decided the reunion should be in Las Vegas. And, you know, that is exactly what happens in gambling on those machines. You don't know, you know that there's, at least in Las Vegas, there's a requirement that there has to be a 70% payout. In this, there isn't. There is no regulation as to how much or how often the machine has to pay off. It's fixed, as they put it in their letter. So, Madam Speaker, this piece of legislation that has been drafted for me by the Attorney General's office addresses what they believe would be, would give them the authority to be able to go in and address these. I love also the letter that came from the Phil Webb, oh, excuse me, Phil Webb owner, that the objection to the fact that we were going to close the business. Well, there are some businesses that should not exist on island, and we, as a community, have spoken numerous times that we want new businesses on island, but we don't want gambling And so the closure of these two, I would have no objection to, and in fact, I would support. And the interesting thing about the fight between this article from the American Gaming Association is the fact that the American Gaming Association is very opposed to online gambling, because online gambling is taking $10 billion of profits that they would otherwise be getting from their casinos. And that's the big fight between, within some of the states. I just came back from the NCSL meeting in Washington DC, and that was one of the big issues, was exactly how casinos in New Jersey are being impacted by online gambling coming out of Philadelphia, how some of these online gambling concerns in various states is undermining the gambling concerns in neighboring states. And many things have been happening. California has been trying to address this. In Florida, it was such a big scandal down there, the Lieutenant Governor had to resign her position. And she was in line to be the next governor of the state, but the amount of money that her public relations company was making from the internet gambling and their involvement in this online scandal in Florida cost her her position as Lieutenant Governor. But all the states are trying to address this, Madam Speaker, and I have been advised by the Attorney General's office that this piece of legislation that is now before us in the form of Bill 192 will assist them in harnessing or controlling a 21st century technology with 21st century law, finally. So I ask my colleagues for their support in the passage of Bill 192-32. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Vice Speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on the motion? Anyone wish, if not, Vice Speaker, move to the third reading voting file? Yes.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. It's been brought to my attention that I needed to make one amendment, and it's to add a definition on page To put a new number three, a new number four and renumber. And it'll read as follows, and this was written by legal staff. It's a new definition, gameplay or simulated gameplay. Any gameplay, whether actual or electronically simulated, which when played may return winnings other than free games not redeemable for cash, of value or, of value to the user based partially on completely or completely upon chance, which a user is required to participate in prior to the reveal of a prize or the receipt of anything of value. I was advised that this amendment was necessary to make sure that we didn't affect one of the children's places where they get their little coupons. And we, and we teach our children how to gamble and get crazy, get in wanting to spend $100 to buy a $3.
On that amendment, on that amendment, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Vice Speaker to the voting file?
Please, thank you.
Without any objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill, Senator Tomata on Bill 224?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 224-32COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, and I would like to discuss it.
Without an objection, no objections, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on December 29th, 1982, Guam adopted its procurement law, and that was adopted by Public Law 16-124. That was 32 years ago. This law is essentially the model procurement code that was developed by the American Bar Association. Between 1982 and today, some piecemeal amendments have been made, otherwise Bill 220, well, some amendments have been made here and there. Now, Bill 224 and other reform bills that are currently in the making will take a holistic approach in the reform of Guam's procurement law that was enacted 32 years ago. Now, Bill 224, the first in a series of five bills to come, addresses the back end of the procurement process. And the back end of the procurement process is where the protests and appeals, or as referred to in the code, the legal and contractual remedies and the appeal opportunities. Now, we should bear in mind that our procurement system is intentionally created to outsource the real-time policing of the procurement process to the private sector by way of protests. However, the only way that procurement will remain effective is if the review process is as expedited as the original procurement process. Otherwise, if, if a bidder who has submitted his bid feels that, you know, the method of selection was incorrect, or timelines were not being followed, and files a protest, we would want that then there are some definite definitive timelines to be able to file a protest and also to be able to get a response from the agencies that they are protesting. Bill 224 aims to make amendments to 15 of the 19 code sections in Articles 9 and 12 of Title V GCA Chapter 5. In drafting Bill 224, we proceeded with the understanding that the structure of the remedial scheme, appeals and protests, is sound, but it is in need of some changes as discussed earlier. And that need is evidenced by the fact that from 2006 to 2012, when the public auditor was mandated by Public Law 28-068 to take over the appeals process, the public auditor's office has had 88 appeals brought before it, averaging approximately 15 appeals a year. That's a little bit more than one a month. In the decisions that the OPA rendered in those appeals as well, as others taken to the court system for further adjudication, many lessons were learned about our procurement code. Bill 224, in a comprehensive effort to improve the entire protest and appeals process, attempts to leverage those lessons learned and improve the procurement protests and appeals process while keeping its basic structure. And I want to add at this point that I, during the process of developing Bill 224 and the formulation of other bills to follow, that I had been consulting with Attorney Thomas, John Thomas Brown, who pretty much has developed his own reputation as someone who is knowledgeable about Guam's procurement law. The public hearing that was held for Bill 224 received testimonies from the Attorney General's office, from the Office of the Public Auditor, from the Chairman of the Procurement Advisory Council, from the Chief Procurement Officer at GSA, from the Guam International Airport Authority, from the Guam DOE, from the GovGuam Retirement Fund, and from two attorneys from the private sector, Attorney Tom Fisher and Jessica Tuft. And so in going about then to, to take into account the testimonies that had been provided, Bill 224, as introduced, began taking on new shape, first by looking at the Attorney General's testimony and incorporating the recommended changes, and then looking at the OPA's testimony and incorporating the recommendations that she had, and the same with GSA and the other testimonies. Now, admittedly, there were recommendations that were not incorporated. For example, if you take a look at page 15, line 2, on Section 5427A, the amendment that was made there seems very simple on line 2. The word damages was included in there. And damages is, for example, if a contractor, I guess by definition, if a contractor feels that, that he hasn't been paid what, what is for the services provided, or if the agency feels that the contractor is not performing, that the agency can then basically file to terminate that contract. And so the, some of the testimonies that we got felt that that was, you know, to, I guess in their experience, when you were going to file for damages, you have to go to the claims court. In addition to adding damages as being part of what the administrative agencies can take a look at, was the expansion, extension of the jurisdiction of the OPA. And you'll find that, like, for example, on page 23, line 6 and 7, in Section 5703, that now the OPA can actually proposes to, the bill proposes to give her the authority to actually adjudicate claims for damages. Now, that, of course, we did not agree, I did not agree with, and, and did not take the recommendations. And the reason for that was because what happens now is that an agency goes through, they make their protest, and existing law says that you've got to exhaust all your administrative options, you go to the GSA, and if you're, and if you're not satisfied with their ruling, then you go and appeal to OPA, and if you're not satisfied with her ruling, then you can go to the court. And in the case of damages, basically what would happen, or what the bill proposes, is that, well, why, why have them go to the claims court when the OPA is there, has all the information, and should be able to adjudicate it? And it was deemed that by extending that jurisdiction to her, that then this protest and the appeal process can be expedited. So again, the, the objective or the goal of Bill 224 in amending Articles 9 and 12 is to be able to expedite the, basically, the resolution of concerns that have been raised by, in particular, by vendors. And so at this point, Mr. Speaker, I'll go ahead and I'll then leave it for my colleagues to ask questions if they have any. And, but I, otherwise, I think that the committee has done a good job of listening to the concerns that have been raised, have incorporated it, really, most of it, into the bill, so that we have something that, that I think is workable from many perspectives. Thank you.
Any senator wishing to be heard on the bill? Any senator wish to be heard on? A short recess. Legislature's back in session. On Bill 224, any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Sinikus.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to rise in full support of Bill 224, and really commend the author and state my admiration for the amount of work and the thoroughness through which so many different elements of our procurement code are addressed, and how the connections are made to ensure that there is going to be prudent exercise of decision-making, pretty much, with respect to the entire procurement process. What I am especially fond of is on page eight, the continuation from page seven, that specifically states that if there is a procurement protest, the territory will not proceed with awarding the contract unless certain conditions are met. And I think that that's an excellent thing for us to codify. We have seen on far too many occasions, at least I have seen on far too many occasions within the short time I've been in office, multiple occurrences were in which a procurement instance raises so many questions, and instead of the entire resolution process taking its course, the agency in question would go out and just issue the contract without allowing the entire adjudication process to be fulfilled. And that creates so many problems in our government. It not only leaves a procurement question unresolved, but it now creates a potential contract issue, where if the government goes into a contract with an entity, how does that relate then to the outstanding procurement question that never got answered? You know, we do have some questions like that in the tens of millions of dollars that are just kind of lingering out there, you know? And it's very bad practice for our government to be awarding contracts without fully resolving all the procurement questions and allowing for the entire process to go through until there is a, there is no longer that cloud of uncertainty as to whether or not the procurement challenges have merit. And so, I just wanted to state my support for that particular section there, and for the entire content of Bill 224, it was extremely well put together, and the author did a fantastic job for the people of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator O'Driscoll.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I too rise in support of this legislation. You know, a lot of times now, we see a lot of the procurement matters being protested in court. And so, what I see this does is take a step towards trying to rectify some of these problems that we're seeing in these protests, so that these can be done administratively, and hopefully it doesn't have to get up to, you know, to the court level. Because as we know, it prolongs whatever service is being protested, and also, it can be very costly when it gets up to the court level. And so, I know that as we approach and work towards really refining our procurement process, I think this is a good start, and so I want to just state for the record my support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think if you take a look through the twenty-six pages here, you'll see basically where amendments were made. And just very briefly, if we take a look, for example, on page six, lines four through seven, it requires in there specifically that if the agency denies a protest, right now, under the current law, they can, you know, take your protest and come back the next day and say denied. That's it. They don't have to explain anything. Now, the law will require, the bill will require that if the agency denies it, then state a reason. State a reason for projecting, for rejecting the protest, whether it was because it was untimely, or that because the protester was not found to be aggrieved, and the reason why, the substantive arguments of the protest, if any, are rejected. So, that's a significant change. Another significant change that the bill makes is on page six also, on lines seventeen through twenty-six, "Failure to Render Timely Decision." Under the current law, I, as a bidder who feel like I've been aggrieved, can submit my protest, and the agency can say, "Thank you," and never hear from them again. Now, the law will require that the agency will have twenty-one days from the date of the protest to make a, oh, wait a minute. If the protester does not receive a decision of the protest as required, within twenty-one days from the date of the protest, the protester can then make a follow-up written request. And if a response is not received within seven days, then that would basically be taken that the protest shall be deemed rejected. That would then give the protester standing to then file their protest to the next level, and that would be the OPA. And so, now it's not, you know, we've kind of closed these black holes. I have a timeline as a bidder to submit my protest, the agency has an obligation to respond within a certain time, and then if I want to appeal it to the next higher level, I have a certain time to respond, and similarly, to the, up to the OPA. Another change that's been made is, and it seems like a real simple amendment, on page eight, on line two, we put in the word "or performance," which my colleague from Dedido mentioned about, that if a protest has been submitted, that we, it puts a halt on the solicitation process, or the award, or the performance, until we get this thing sorted out. Now, of course, some of the objections that were raised were basically said, "Well, you know, but what if we have an emergency situation and all that?" And the law has always provided that those, the, basically, the stop that is put to everything can actually be lifted, provided certain, provided that certain conditions are met. So, it is not, you know, they can't, they can't lock us, that bidder cannot lock us in, because he got pissed off that he did not get awarded, he decides to then just file a protest and just to make it hard for everyone. And those, Mr. Speaker, are just some of the changes that has been put in place to help, to facilitate the resolution of concerns that bidders may have when things don't go right with the procurement process. And so, another major change has been that if the OPA, we've had, we've seen cases where the OPA disqualifies herself because of a conflict of interest, and I guess what that would have done under the current law is it would have then bumped the matter up to Superior Court. And of course, we all know what happens, that they have their own workload over there, and it just further draws out the process. Now, what the bill would call for is that in a case where the OPA has to disqualify herself, then the Superior Court shall appoint a hearing officer to basically take over the process so that they can do it, they can continue the hearings according to the OPA's protocol and under the OPA's budget. So, that also will help speed things up. So, I just asked my colleagues to my colleagues to, between now and the time that we vote, to take a look at the bill. I think we've had the proper stakeholders come to the public hearing to provide their testimonies. Those testimonies were taken into consideration. And the fact that also this bill was drafted with a consultation from attorney John Thomas Brown, who has been basically reputed as somebody who knows a lot about Guam procurement law. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And I move that Bill 224-32, as substituted, be sent down to the voting file.
On the motion, please, Bill 224-32 was substituted in the voting file. Any objection? Hearing no objections, so ordered. The speaker available? Can you check the speaker's? Bill 225. Madam Speaker, you recognize on Bill 225?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 225, I would like to thank my two colleagues that joined me, Senator Munia Barnes and Senator Yamaschita. What Bill 225 will do here is amend existing public law 32-69. And what that is, is that it is to amend and make the adjustment in the real property valuation cap. When the Department of Revenue and Taxation had gone before Senator Nicholas's committee, one of the things they said that with the funding that they would receive to do the reavow was that they anticipate conservatively collecting about $10 million. And originally, the bill did not even list a cap, but in public law 32-69, membership felt that we wanted to put a cap, and it was $7 million. The cap in this bill is going to be raised to about, conservatively again, 8.7 million for several reasons. One is that the amount in which we had appropriated in public law 32-67 for UOG falls short of the amount that they would need. UOG had received work from USDA that, based on some changes, of course, and the interest rates, is that the amount now would need to go up to $1.17 million. And just today, they had given us the actual number that they had received from UOG, and that's the amendment that I will be making further on, which would be much less 1.125. What this bill also would do, if you remember now, when we say that conservatively about 10 millions, because we've not done a reavow of our real property tax for over 19 years. And my understanding is that the RFP has gone out already and by, oh, rather, it would have been awarded already because it was out since last year, late last year. What this bill also would do is that it would actually then be able to provide for $1.2 million for the 36 other schools. The superintendent has always said that, yes, Simon Sanchez is a priority, but at the same time, he would not want to neglect the rest of the other schools. So in the original law, 32-67, there was $3 million that would be available for Simon Sanchez. But by raising the cap now, then what it is, is that it will be close to about $5 million. And that $5 million then would actually yield close to about $53 million that can be used then for the rebuilding of Simon Sanchez High School to include a sports facility. In addition, in this amendment, what we did is that we looked at other successes in Chapter 58, Title V, and that's the leasing of all the schools, Okadu High School, Estumbo Middle School, Adakau and Liguan Elementary School. We looked at the past legislations and patterned the bill after that from their successes. But then we also looked at the JFK bill where we saw a difference. And the difference, of course, that we saw, that the AG felt that was important and had some concerns and wanted to make sure we provide this, will be contractual safeguards. And that's also on the bill, and I'll tell you the sections for that. The other difference that is very different from what had happened with JFK is that this time, we are going to have regulatory agencies, specific regulatory agencies then, who would actually sit down and work with the superintendent, individuals from DPW, from the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, from GITA, and from land management. The one thing that came before us during the public hearing was a request from the superintendent because the companion Bill 225 is Bill 226. And in 226, we were going to do a comprehensive study. And that was also to support what Senator Yamaschita and Senator Tom Ada had proffered at one time, which is public law, is for the department to do this comprehensive capital improvement plan. So the superintendent asked if we could then instead put it on the front end of the bill, which is in 225 rather than 226, so that then, when they go out to get the bond monies, they'll be able to use some of that money to actually do the study for all of the schools. So that therefore, when they get the monies that, as a result of the monies to be available from the reavow, that they would yield about $80 million. Now, I know that the study from the Army Corps of Engineer had indicated that there was going to be about $9 million in their estimate, $90 million of work that needed to be done. However, what we have to factor in is that through the ARAMONIS, is that we've already addressed, like, for example, air conditioning in all of the schools. They've addressed all of the rooftops in all of our schools, and also the Antalan Middle School, the renovation of Antalan Middle School. So if you take those three major projects, whether the Department of Education, then what will happen is that it would reduce that amount from $90 million, hopefully then now, to what we'll be able to yield here, which is $80 million. As you go through the bill, just so that you can follow through, I try to be as detailed in terms of explaining some of these things and why going this route in a leaseback was the best option for the department. Because if you really looked at our debt ceiling assessment, right now, we are at $1.1 billion. Now, if you take our general obligation bond, debt, rather, we are at $460 million. And then if you take our limited obligation debt, it's at $663 million. Now, what normally you would do is to subtract those two, and then that will tell you then what will be our debt ceiling. And our debt ceiling, at least based on what we got from revenue tax, is that we are at $29 million. Therefore, there is absolutely no way we could build, even rebuild or renovate at the $29 million. Hence, then, of course, why we've decided to move on this route that I'm suggesting on this bill. So the comprehensive plan is there on page five, four, five is listed. And then, also on page eight, talks about it. Then on nine, where we're saying that what we're going to do here, using the other language in the other bills, is that it is to fund the design, renovate and construct. And that's the leaseback. One major amendment in this bill that we put in, and it's a technical amendment, is to actually change the chapter number, I mean, not the number, the letter C, to D because Chapter 58C, we had already assigned that to the security cameras. So this is a whole new series in the chapters, so this will be Chapter 58D. So, and that is the next, yes, you're right. So wherever it says, if I may, that's the First Amendment, if I may, then is that in the bill is that to make the changes throughout the bill where it speaks about on Chapter 58, that wherever it says C, that that be changed to D. That's the First Amendment, if I may.
On that amendment?
Thank you. And then if you go to page 11, that's the safeguards that I told you about, in which then we want to make sure that the contractor, who is going to get this contract to build the schools, that one is that they would be, that we must work on the following areas: warranties, liquidated damages. None of these, by the way, I'll tell you, were ever even incorporated in the JFK High School. Performance and payment bonds, indemnity, insurance, standard specifications, technical specifications, progress schedule, maintenance, compliance with the Guam Labor Regulations, compliance with the Guam prevailing wage rate, and compliance with public law 29-98, which is the restriction against contractors employing sex offenders, convicted sex offenders, to work at government of Guam venues. Then, when you go to down now to the breakdown in terms of how the monies are going to be divided up, if you go to page 13, then what that is, is the amendment from 7 to 8.5. And now, how then would that amount be reflected here? On number one, subsection one, on line eight, that's the amendment that I originally had made to make it $1,179, because that was what was given to us originally at the public hearing. But as of today, this morning, that dollar amount has changed. So my second amendment is to make it $1,158,283.
Did everybody get that number?
$1,158,283. $158,283. And that's on page 13, line eight. And that's the latest number that they received from USDA.
Any senator wish to be heard on this?
And along with that, and the reason why that dollar amount is there that low, but I want to make sure that this is, let me see, I do have the, I'll give it to the clerks. This is how the amendment would read, that it's one that changed the sum of $1,179,000 to $1,158,283, beginning in fiscal year 2014. And then after the word "foundation," the end of that in line 13, for a term of 40 years.
Did all senators hear the amendment being proffered by the good speaker? Any senator wish to be heard on the amendment being proffered? Senator Nicholas, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I request a brief recess, Mr. Speaker?
Short recess granted. Legislative Assemblywoman, Dr. Lisa M. Smith, 138, 128, 129, 130, 129, 129, 129, 129, 129,
Legislatures back in session. Senator Nicholas, I believe we'd like, oh, no? Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. So, the amendment then is to reduce the 1.179 million to 1.158 million for UOG for a term of 40 years. And that is the most recent number that we got, the university got this morning from USDA.
Okay, on that amendment. Any objection? Any senator who wish to be heard?
And, okay, let me see. And further on in the language which I've not changed in the formula, because by raising the cap, the formula has, yes, that's included, for a term of 40 years, yes. That I've not changed anything else in the formula because it's only a percentage for all of the different items. So that had, remains, so that is the extent then of what bill two, two five is. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any others? It's Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have a few amendments I would like to proper in consultation with the author. The first is on page 14, line 20, regarding subsection eight. Basically, what subsection eight is intending to do is to take 10% of this amount, which is estimated at a conservative number of $400,000 per year, and have it apply to the four areas under sections A, B, C, and D. These are all priority areas that do need to be met, and I'd like to thank the author for helping us to find the revenue to meet these priority areas. Another priority area, however, is something that we've heard from our public auditor about, and something that we've all kind of recognized with respect to the finances of this government, and that is the need for us to have a unified financial management information system that has DRT, Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Department of Administration, the General Services Agency, particularly procurement, and the Office of Public Accountability, all talking to each other in terms of the unified finances of our government. And this is very, very important for us to be able to track and manage the people's money in a way that will allow us to more effectively account for every single one of the people's dollars. And what I would like for us to consider doing is provisioning for this procurement of a unified financial management information system. And so at this time, I'd like to make an adjustment to the amount under section eight to reduce it from 10% down to 5%. That way, all of those priority areas are still receiving funding support, but I would like, and I will offer in a future amendment, to have that additional 5% go towards the realization of a unified financial management information system for our island. So my amendment is on page 14, line 21, to reduce the amount from 10% down to 5%.
Amendment. Senator Maschida.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the question I have then is an understanding, of course, it's, it is good, it is important, it is critical, to have all our financial systems speaking with each other on the same page, using the same software, spitting out the types of reports that are needed and to be understood, and to connect all of the points. The question I would have is, are not the different agencies already working on this? I thought Revenue and Tax was working on something, I thought Department of Education with its, with its at-risk, that whole status, where they're paying, we're paying 3 million a year to get, to have them tell us that we're still not doing well enough. I thought that was a whole big part of it, was that whole financial system getting better at getting, at the software and the hardware. So, my question, Madam, Mr. Speaker, is do we really need to allocate monies to something that might already be supported or being planned for?
I can't answer that question. Do you have information?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I had the privilege of meeting with the public auditor about a week ago, and the public auditor shared with me the need for us to actually come together and make sure that all of these agencies sit down and come to a final consensus on the adoption of a unified financial management information system. Because to her, based on her experience and with everything that she's been working with in the government, there is financial management systems in place, but they're all, they're all siloed, they're not talking to each other. And that's why sometimes we will get some information from Rev and Tax that isn't reconciling up with Department of Administration. They're also not reconciling purchases from GSA that correspond with the encumbrances for procurement that they're doing, and the availability of cash that's actually in the Department of Administration. And of course, there's no communication with all of that to the Office of Public Accountability. And so what's happening is our auditors having to go into each of these individual agencies, and because everything's siloed, they're having to dig through all of this financial information separately, and connecting the dots is an even bigger nightmare. And it's important that we connect those dots because those are the lines that show us exactly how money's moving in this government, whether or not the priority areas are getting funded. I mean, just in the hearing that we had, the informational hearing that we had regarding the HEPE, I asked a very pointed and clear question to the Director of the Department of Administration, and I asked, "Is DOE fully funded for fiscal year 2014?" And her response was, "Yes, they're fully funded for FY 2014." And I, I was taken aback, I even asked to have her sworn in under oath, and she refused because it wasn't an official hearing. But if you just read today's paper, and if you just give me a second, she said, "Yes, they are fully funded," but on page three of today's paper, "Department of Education not receiving funds for payroll, $2 million late, labor law violation, $43,800 paid in penalties and interest to the retirement fund because they're doing net pay, and they're not actually remitting retirement fund contributions." So obviously, Mr. Speaker, even the Director of the Department of Administration, who said in the hearing that they are fully funded, did not know that DOE was paying $43,800 in interest, or that they were $2 million late in payroll. And so it's clear that we need to provision funds to be able to make sure that we procure the necessary financial management information system so that whenever we want to move forward on spending the people's money, we are absolutely certain that the money is there. So, in that, in response to the question, no, I don't think that we have it, and all the information coming out right now is very indicative of that.
Senator Maschida.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, just, you know, I too was at the public hearing, and I really think that's more a function of your budget. Whatever appropriations they release, DOE fully funded those appropriations. And as you know, there is a difference in those two processes.
Yes, there is a difference between the word appropriation and allotment.
Yes.
And I think that's where everybody was getting
Yes, and so
Caught up, is that they were playing with the fact that he kept mentioning appro, fully funded, appropriation, when
Right, and so her response was whatever direction she was given is what she did. But I go back to the question that I have, and so if we're going to amend it from 10% to 5%, shall be appropriated as a source of funding? And maybe if I just saw the amendment, so then the 5% would go to Rev and Tax to do this communication system, or financing system, or the 5% is going to go to, is going to go somewhere to come up with a system that talks to each other?
Sure, I do, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate the questions, they're very good questions. The 5%, the amendment that I will be proffering, if we do reduce this from 10% down to 5%, is to take that 5% and lockbox it so that as we, as the funds accumulate, we're going to have that money held in reserves that after, and then it will require that the financial management information system that is procured is that which is recommended by consensus from DRT, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Department of Administration, the General Services Agency, and the Office of Public Accountability. And so that money will be set aside, all of these entities have to come together for a recommendation on what financial management system to adopt, and then finally, when that recommendation is available, we will have the money there. Because the last thing I want is for us to have everybody sit down and talk about what we need to get, and then to have it come back to us and say, "Well, we need the money for this," and the money's not there because we don't know where to get it from. So I do want to set aside that 5% in a lockbox provision so that that money accumulates and is there when we are finally able to get consensus from all of the entities that are handling our people's money on what financial management information system we actually need to procure, and then we have the money to actually go out and do it.
And so, Mr. Speaker, thank you. And so, Mr. Speaker, amendment is coming, and so I'll wait for that amendment. If the, what I heard him say is if the 10% to the 5% is supported, would he be able to give me an amount of what that 5% would look like? And he's much better at math than I am.
I, yes, Mr. Speaker, and I'm not that great, but I, based on the approximations from the speaker, at 10%, we're looking at about approximately 200, $400,000. So if we reduce that down to 5%, we're looking at $200,000.
Okay.
Is that per category?
That, the, right now, the way the bill is written is it's 10% for this particular subsection here in the bill, and so that will be $400,000 per year for item eight in the bill. If we reduce it down to 5%, it will be $200,000 per year. And then if we do pass the subsequent amendment that I'm going to propose, that will be lockboxing an additional $200,000 away for the financial management information system.
Is that clear now?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I just want to further clarify or verify that in that subsequent amendment that he's going to proffer, if that's going to include the whole, all of those agencies coming together to make sure that they communicate and one doesn't have an advantage over the other? If you can just state that further, oh, I'm sorry.
Senator Nicholas?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, yes, the amendment that I will proffer will require that the unified financial information system is that which is recommended by a consensus of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Department of Administration, the General Services Agency, the Office of Public Accountability, and the Office of Technology. So they will all have to come together and have a consensus on a system, finally a consensus on a unified system, and then we will be able to take the money from there and procure that system.
Thank you.
All right. You may continue, Senator Nicholas.
So, Mr. Speaker, I would, at this time, like to proffer that initial amendment to reduce the amount from 10%
On the initial amendment of reducing from 10% to 5% in H, any other, any other senator who wish to be heard? Any objection to the amendment reducing from 10 to 5%? There being no objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And my next amendment that I would like to proffer is on page 15, line 10. I would like to add a new section, a new subsection nine, which would then subsequently, technically, a technical amendment for the current nine to move to number 10, but for this new subsection nine to read other than the portions designated to be used in items one, two, three, four, five of this subsection, 5% shall be lockboxed for the procurement of a unified financial management information system as recommended by consensus from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Department of Administration, the General Services Agency, the Office of Public Accountability, and the Office of Technology.
Senator Maschida. I'm the amendment, followed by Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if indeed this is going to be a unified financial system where everybody's going to be talking the same language and agreeing on what needs to happen, I believe we also need to include the semi-autonomous agencies at the table, UOG, GCC, and GDOE. I don't even know GDOE is autonomous anymore, or semi-autonomous, but they take a bulk of the money, and a lot of our issues are around the Department of Education, and so their cost factors always go into what this big, bigger pot looks like. So if we really want everyone to talk together, I would ask that UOG, GCC, and GDOE be included, and maybe even GMH. They're semi-autonomous, yes? Or they're not? Or maybe they're not. But anybody who has money that, you know, we always end up talking about, where's the money going, how's it being spent? Because I understand the intent of the amendment, and I agree with the intent, everybody should be talking together. I thought we were already doing this, but if we're not, then, you know, I support that.
Senator Nicholas.
A very wise observation from the senator. I have no objections to including in the listing that I stated the University of Guam, the Guam Community College, the Guam Department of Education, and the Guam Memorial Hospital.
Thank you.
All right. On the amendment as amended, any other senator who wish to be heard? Senator Rodriguez, she wanted to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, when the First Amendment prior to this was proffered to reduce the 10% to 5%, I didn't object to it. However, I would be objecting to the use of this 5% now for this unified management system, because I believe, and I think if I missed it, I apologize, that, you know, one of my colleagues has mentioned that, you know, we're supposed to be doing this already. We've had, I remember, a few sessions back, we had several bills that took some money from, the remaining funds from highway road projects, and we used that to, to improve or to get a software for Rev and Tax, to make sure that they're, you know, they're communicating with DOE and with all the other, you know, agencies that need to be, you know, that need to be talking to each other. And so, you know, as I was looking and looking at the discussions, one of the areas that we, that we need to seriously look at funding is children's mental health. And, and as this bill has come forward, I see it as an opportunity, as our opportunity here to take this 5% and put it to where it's going to serve a better purpose. A purpose that, you know, I know, especially your efforts, you know, Mr. Vice Speaker, in promoting and helping children's mental health programs. But we all know that times are tough, funding is hard to come by, but this here is a real opportunity to take this 5%, which is going to come up to about, is it, $200,000, you know, and put it into, you know, the children's mental health programs. And so, for the reasons that I've stated, in, I think it's misplacing the use of this money into a system where we're supposed to have already, where we've funded, you know, we've funded these improvements that needed to, you know, to be made already. And so I would, I would object to it, and if my objection sustained, I would then make an amendment to move this 5% for children's mental health services. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
A short recess.
A short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in consultation with some of our colleagues here, I still feel, I still believe that what the efforts that we've done to provide resources to the government, to get their systems talking to each other, you know, should be sufficient. I mean, they came to us and represented these problems and, you know, we've worked to ensure that the resources provided to them. And so I feel that the 5% that we've reduced now should go to Children's Mental Health Services. And so I would keep my objection. Thank you.
There was an objection to the main motion. I mean, not the bill, but the 5%. The 5%. So any other senator wish to be heard? On the amendment, then, there has been an objection. All those in favor of this Nicholas amendment indicate by raising your hand. On the main motion. Did you wish to speak on it? Oh, you still have the floor. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Speaker, I can appreciate the sentiment of the retiring speaker. I have, my own child is a recipient of Behavioral Health Services, and of course, that is a dire need in our community. The reason why the initial amendment was made to reduce the amounts under Item 8 by 5% was because I was of the position that that priority could take a second slot to the overriding priority of us getting all of our financial systems talking to each other. We have financial systems in DOE that are separate from the financial systems in DRT and DOA, that are separate from the financial systems in GMH and UOG and GCC, that are all separate from the ability of the public auditor to go in and look at these things. And as much as we want to be able to provide, even for something as critical as behavioral health, if we aren't able to manage our money effectively by looking at all of the numbers and by making sure that all of our independent systems are talking to each other, Mr. Speaker, we can spend $200,000 a year on that problem, but we're going to have the even bigger problem of our schools not even making payroll, which affects the education system, which affects the mental health of all of our students. We're going to have the bigger problem of our hospitals not being able to get the funding that they need on time or for us to be able to track where that money is at on a very efficient basis. That's going to have an impact on the mental health of all the kids that are needing the medicines up there. You know, for me, what has always been a very, very big part of what I try to contribute here to this body is the notion that if we fix our financial house, we're going to address so many of the problems that are associated with money management. And I appreciate the work of the author in this bill, and I look forward to, in the future perhaps, getting us to that point that the public auditor herself share with me where we're able to get a unified financial management information system for our community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator Ragan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of this measure, and I'm glad that now we're also able to address an issue that's very important in our community, an issue that for many, many years, we've known needs is challenged and needs the additional resources. And, you know, I think if we look at it, it's not just the amount of $200,000 that we're going to be providing to Children's Mental Health Services. It's the principle, Mr. Speaker, the principle that this body is now going to ensure that Children's Mental Health Services is an important and critical issue that must be dealt with. And $200,000 is very small, you know, and it'll make a small dent in the whole bigger picture of things. However, it's a principle that now that we're able to realize some additional revenues from the reevaluation of property, of real estate, that this is one of the important issues that we're taking care of, just like we have here. You know, we're taking care of ensuring that there's a construction of the student services at UOG. We're putting money aside for early childhood, for early childhood, and for, of course, Simon Sanchez and for others. But to ensure now that we also make a statement and say that Children's Mental Health Services are very important, then that's something we need to do. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment that would take 5% of what was originally set for DRT and now use that 5% for use for Children's Mental Health Services programs administered by the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center.
Can we take a short recess? It's been made by Senator Rodriguez. Any senator wish to be heard on the Rodriguez amendment? Any objection to the Rodriguez amendment? No objection? Anything further?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the brief recess where you shared with us that, just like you shared with us yesterday, if it's earlier today or yesterday, about how this body provides the resources to these agencies and these departments. You shared with us the example of Public Works and how we were working on an initiative here to ensure that we get some resources, you know, for school buses, yet, you know, we discovered that money is taken away from there. And just like you've informed us now with mental health about a large sum of money not being used, and perhaps, you know, using the money from Peter to pay Paul, as we, you know, hear over and over again. And so I think too, as we now made the statement that Children's Mental Health Services is going to be one of the beneficiaries of this, want to make sure that, at least for this small amount, and I know it's probably, you know, we use this language in the budget appropriations, but what I'd like to do is add this, that in the amendment we just passed, that 5% goes to Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, is that this fund now is not subject to any transfer authority of the Governor of Guam.
On that amendment... Pardon? We'll take a recess.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. In the spirit of cooperation, Mr. Speaker, and to ensure that, you know, we get what it is, you know, we want done, both ensuring that we make that statement and, you know, we get some funds to children's mental health services, and to ensure that the, you know, the financial management system is up to par to be able to sustain, you know, what it is we're doing, even though, in my mind, you know, I believe that it's something that we have supported and provided resources to, I'm willing to undo the First Amendment where we take 5% and give it to children's mental health, and to bring it back to the for use for this unified financial management system. So that can be the First Amendment.
Any objection to reconsider? He's reconsidering his, the earlier action. So the motion is to reconsider the earlier action that was approved. And so... Okay.
So what it is, just to be clear, just to be clear, Mr. Speaker, it is to reconsider the motion to place 5% to children's mental health, to reconsider that motion that passed. Okay, so that's the first thing. And now that 5% would go into the motion that failed by Senator Sinicalis that would designate that 5% for a unified financial management system.
Okay.
And then I have another amendment after that.
All right, and so... On going back to the action that we took on Sinicalis's. Okay. Okay. All right.
Okay, and so the final amendment, Mr. Speaker, is through working with Senator Yamashita and the main mover here, is to what we've designated for early childhood programs, we're going to split that to have 50% of what is designated for early childhood programs, and the other 50% will now be for children's mental health services administered by the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. But then the amendment should also include that we're going to establish a children's mental health fund, just like we're doing on page 15, so we can get the legal counsel to help in developing that as well.
Senator Aragon?
Sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just on the amendment, I stand in support of the amendment, but I would like to recommend that the legal counsel insert rather than 50%, that 3.5% because it's reflective of the cumulative amount. So it would read, very similar to subsection 7, it would be 3.5%, and then in accordance with the motion or the amendment, proposed amendment, which would create that child fund that the good senator mentioned. So my suggestion, Mr. Speaker, is that the 3.5% be applied to subsection number 7, and that a new subsection, which would take the additional 3 points, the remaining 3.5%, be allocated specifically in accordance with the mover of the amendment, so that at least is delineated separately and it's itemized accordingly. So I stand in support of the amendment, and I certainly would like to proffer that suggestion.
On the suggested amendment to the amendment, any other senator wish to be heard? And no objection? We'll have to get this clear with the clerks to make sure everybody's amendments are. All right, thank you. Anything further? Senator Aragon, you wish to be heard on the bill, on the main motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if you revert to page 15, section 4, subsection 4, and if the good sponsor of the previous amendment would also highlight and identify the subsection within the code, the establishment of that particular special fund which Speaker Wampe was just suggesting would, should be established in the code itself. So I guess that's where the coordination comes in with the legal counsel as well as the mover of the previous amendment.
All right.
So I'd like to move for that to, as an amendment initially, and then I do have another issue I'd like to address.
Hearing no objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just for purposes of consistency, I'd like to ask our colleagues to revert to page 13, and if we notice that in lines 4 and 5, the amount to be allocated is not to exceed the $8.5 million, but then as you move down towards the subsections, in one subsection, in subsection 1, it says as a source of payment, for the purposes of paying, subsection 2, it says for the construction renovation of the buildings, and then you move on to some of the other subsections. Apparently, it uses different languages, like, for example, on page 14, it says the remaining balance shall be appropriated as a source, and then subsection on line 17, it says shall be deposited, and then line 22 says shall be appropriated. I'd like to move that there be one consistent language applied to these particular subsections, Mr. Speaker, only because the appropriation is already incorporated in the original page, which is on page 13 on the top, and then these are all subcomponents. So it really does not have to read, it's hereby appropriated, but appropriate language can be utilized so that it's understood and so that there's consistency. I just didn't like the idea that in one case it's a major appropriation, in a subsection it's an appropriation, in another subsection it's an allocation. So I would like to move that consistent language be applied there for that particular section. Is that confusing enough, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, no.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I'm going to recess until morning. I'm going to need Senator Rodriguez to meet with legal counsel to write the complete new section for this new fund that's going to be created, Senator Aragon to do the same thing with what he wants to have done, and we will continue the discussion on 225 tomorrow morning at 9:00. The legislature stands in recess until 9:00 tomorrow morning.